Now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on February 7th, 2023 to order at 3:04 PM. Sorry, we're a couple of minutes late. Welcome, everybody. Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation, and staff will distribute those to council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on a work session agenda item? Seeing no one is registered to speak, we will now recess the regular session and convene to work session with a report from our city manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council and to the public. We're excited to bring you a good agenda today. First off, first and foremost, I want to say welcome to Councilmember Horner. Welcome, sir. You're making fans already.
He hasn't screwed up yet.
Hadn't messed up yet. Well, we appreciate, he's already hit the ground running and appreciate your service. And the other thing I appreciate, wanted to highlight recognition of employees today. The city team once again showed their dedication to Waco and our residents during last week's winter weather Mara is what they're calling it. Our city teams were very well-prepared for the event, and I'm glad to say we didn't have any damages reported to city facilities as a result of the winter weather. We did operate a warming center for four days and served as many as 22 people at the peak of the event. Our operations team throughout the organization worked around the clock, and you see some imagery there of folks doing what they do no matter the circumstances. So very much appreciate each time we have unique weather events, our unique and talented workforce steps up to the challenge. So wanted to highlight their efforts there. Today, we do have three informal reports on the agenda. The first is informal report 061 that informs the public about our approach to solicit proposals for solar farms on three landfill sites consisting initially of about 20 acres, but potentially expandable to up to 130 acres of solar farms cumulatively. We'll seek these proposals from firms that will use their own capital to install solar panels on our property and then engage in a revenue sharing agreement with the companies for the energy generated. So a pretty inventive approach, and hopefully the market will respond favorably to that effort.
I'll just comment on that one, Bradley. I think it's a great effort here because the residual value of a landfill is somewhat limited. So as we go through that reclamation process, I like staff's thought about starting to think about what's next for this deal and creatively thinking about how to utilize that property for something that will benefit the city and the energy source like solar panels and the methane that's in there, too. It seems like we could figure this out. So hitting the RFP out for that or RFQ, I applaud. And Chuck, I see Chuck Dowdell, he's kind of been behind this deal, and I appreciate your work on getting this to the next steps.
Chuck is not limited in his creativity.
Absolutely.
I'll say that.
So, City Manager, when the RFQs go out, do we know what kind of timeline we're looking at?
Do you want to take, you want to walk us through?
Spot, sir.
Good afternoon, Chuck Dowdell, Chief Sustainability Officer. Yes, thank you, that's a good question. We anticipate we're going to release the RFQ in the spring. And we'll give the teams that propose about 45 or 60 days or so, depending on their responses. So I anticipate coming back to council with an award sometime in the summer to, say, early fall. And I would anticipate that that will lay out a business case analysis for us. We can go back and present that information to council so we can all make informed decisions and determine what's in the best interest, how many acres, and what the system should be composed of.
Thank you, Chuck.
We'll be sure and be providing updates along the way.
I would love that because I think, you know, I think this is one of the directives that this council has been committed to, enhancing and advancing our sustainability. Yes, we know we can't do it all overnight, but we are committed to consistently doing it, and this is certainly a way to do that in land space that has now, will soon have other uses.
That's right. Well said. Our second IR on the agenda today is 062, which talks about a request for resolution of support for development seeking to use the state's housing tax credit program to develop affordable housing. More details, as noted in the IR, will be forthcoming at a future budget audit meeting, but the requesting party is seeking to develop a facility in Council District One for affordable housing. This part of an annual process that the council sees these requests and look forward to visiting more about that at a budget audit meeting.
On this one, Bradley, Holmes here again. I just want to give a shout out to Mr. Price, Galen Price. And when I first got on council, these would come up, the low-income housing tax credits would come up, and I don't know, three or four of them would come in, and we kind of had to evaluate them ourselves and figure out what to do. But you came up with a scoring system and a review, and I appreciate the work that Galen has done on this, and I look forward to seeing the work at the next meeting or, I guess, coming in a future meeting.
I believe it's coming up at budget audit, the next one. Yeah. He's nodding at me, so I think that's right. Our last IR is 063, which is an update on the private renovations occurring over at Trenwood Apartments in District One as well. So Galen and his team have put together an update speaks to the renovations as well as support being provided to residents on site. There was a pretty detailed article in the Waco Tribune today as well regarding this topic.
I will echo Councilmember Holmes in our appreciation of Director Price. This is, this has been a process with Trenwood, one that we committed to because our citizens deserved better, and substandard housing is just absolutely unacceptable. I, in the meetings that I have had with the new management staff, they seem committed to building community and rebuilding community. And, you know, I'm looking at the activities, the monthly activities map or calendar that they have, you know, with the weekly coffee and conversations, weekly touchpoints with the residents, door-to-door interaction and engagement. So it's, it's one thing to see that, yes, there's an enhancement of security, but there's also an enhancement of community with opportunities for people to build and grow in this as they are building and growing. I mean, I know it's a difficult transition to put all your stuff in a pod and move away while buildings are being renovated, but I believe that what will come from the new Trenwood will be a, just an opportunity to continue to grow a sustaining community. I mean, you all know, when my mama was a new Wacoan, she lived in Trenwood, not because, it was just, this was back in the, let's tell her age like that, but early 70s before she was married. And so it, it is a true testament to the, how much time has transpired since it was a new community, but nonetheless that it was lasting. So our continued support to that is appreciated. I know your hands are knee-deep in it, Galen, so I appreciate that. And, you know, once, once we get this secured and completed, you know, we'll have a new, just a new jewel in District One.
Well said. And thanks for reminding me about the history there. I was leaning over to Jennifer and said, I forgot that your mother lived there. That's a good, good reminder. We do have two public hearings on the agenda today. Public hearing 075 is, of course, a public hearing and an adjoining resolution regarding the downtown implementation plan, recommended for approval by Plan Commission recently, and you'll be hearing more about that here in a few minutes from Clint Peters, I believe. Really ready to go. And public hearing 076 is a public hearing and resolution for a special permit requested by Encore Electric. You'll hear a little more about this one as well, but I believe they've requested a continuance on the matter to a future council meeting, but Clint will cover that in a moment in the work session. We do have 20 resolutions on the agenda today, represents a significant amount of work by city staff. We have 11 ordinances on the agenda today. I'm going to highlight just a couple of things here. On ordinance 098, you're going to hear a detailed presentation from our financial advisor as well as Rusty Hill, our Assistant Director of Finance. It's our first and final reading on the combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation bond sale, and it's a, it's a significant item, and so we did schedule that for a work session today, and I look forward to the council hearing about it. Ordinance 097 is another one I wanted to highlight. It's a first reading for a developer participation agreement with Mercer McMillan LLC. This is a project that staff and the developer are working on, an agreement to upsize the wastewater line in the area of Central Texas' most successful industrial park in between the freeway and Bagby this side exists. We will partner with the developer and reimburse up to $2.5 million for that upsizing, and that will generate new opportunities in the industrial park for us. This agreement is part of a series of improvements needed to support development of hundreds of additional acres nearby, and one of which, some of that acreage is going to Project Gateway, which the council has been familiar with for a little while. Project Gateway is the site of the largest economic development project in our region's history, thanks to a $1 billion planned investment by Graphic Packaging, who went public with their planned new facility in Waco earlier today. So we're excited about that, and we, staff and council certainly very much look forward to supporting the continued growth of the industrial park and the region's economy with both this ordinance and the future related items to come at future meetings. Ordinance 099 through 107 are second readings, and Mayor and Council, that concludes my report, and I'll take any questions that you have for me.
The consent agenda includes resolutions 2023, 077 through 096. Are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda? Well, the consent agenda will include resolution 2023, 77 through 96, except, oh, and that will be, there's no items removed, is that correct? Great. So 77 through 96. The next item on the work, on the agenda is the work session, 2023, 64 through 69. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
Yes, sir. We've got a team of individuals I'll invite to the, to the table here to discuss the proposed issuance and sale of combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation. As the council's been briefed at budget audit and prior meetings, we are anticipating approximately a $200 million sale to support a number of strategic projects. I'll do an introduction here of the folks at the table, and then am I turning it over to Rusty or Nick? Nick, okay. All right. All right. Well, we'll start from my right to left. We've got, of course, Nick Sarpy, our Chief Financial Officer. To his left is Drew Masterson, who serves as our financial advisor and runs Masterson Advisors LLC. To his left, Glenn Opel, who serves as Bond Counsel from Bracewell for the city. And then last but not least, Rusty Hill, our Assistant Director of Finance, who makes it all happen. So it's a great team we got in front of you, and I'll turn it over to Nick at this point.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So as Bradley mentioned, we're here to kind of go over the 2023 certificates of obligation. So Rusty and I will talk about the project information, and then we'll turn it over to Drew and Glenn to talk about the actual bond issue. And a lot of this might look familiar from the December budget audit committee meeting. So the planned issuance includes over $193 million in projects spread across the entire city organization, including fire stations, water treatment plant improvements, new wastewater treatment plants, solid waste landfill transfer stations, and including the TIF projects as well. This slide just demonstrates the changes from the original budget as adopted and this bond issuance and the changes that we've made by the various categories, products that we've added, products that we've taken off, products where we've adjusted the funding amount based off of needs. And with that, I'll turn it over to Drew.
Thank you, Nick. Okay, this slide is just a graph of the municipal bond GO index, which, if you think of the Dow Jones Index, maybe for the stock market, this would be the equivalent for us in the muni bond world. It's a 15-year history, and if you look on the right side of the graph, you see that from 2019 to 2022, we were at record-low interest rates there, around 2% on this high-grade index. Then last year, rates shot up over 2%, 2.5% really increase, and since October, we've come back down over 1% decrease. So looking considerably better than we were last fall in terms of interest rates. Next slide. This is the same projects that Nick outlined. We have on the left, on the left side of the table, the Series 23A, which is the tax-exempt series. On the right sides, the 23Bs, which are the taxable bonds. In the bottom part of the page, you can see on the right side that the TIF projects and the solid waste projects are in part being issued as taxable bonds because of potential private use of portions of those facilities. You have greater flexibility in dealing with the private sector if you don't issue them tax-exempt because of all the handcuffs that come with tax-exempt financing. Going to the top of the page, on the left side, under the 23As, we have a column for current market rates as of January 23rd, about two weeks ago, and then rates from December 6th, back when we met with the Budget Audit Committee. And you see rates have come down. If you look at the all-in true interest cost for the Series A, right now, we would estimate around 410, where it was a 4.5 back in December. And I would say those rates assumed a 50-basis-point cushion above then-market rates. Rates have probably gone up 10 or 12 basis points since two weeks ago because of the big employment release on Friday. Rates have gone up since then in the municipal world about 10 or 12 basis points. So we probably still have 40 basis points cushion in these rates over what we're, what we're estimating. On the right side, the taxable rates, all-in true interest cost for the taxable series would be about 5.5% compared to 561 a couple of months ago. Next slide. These are the different amortizations for the different projects, and basically, it's a whole lot of numbers. I would summarize it by saying the message that we want you to receive from this page is that we amortize the bonds over the appropriate useful life of the different facilities, so we're not just putting debt out there as long as we can. For example, if you look in the solid waste column, you see most of that debt is amortized over five years. Next slide. The same analysis for the taxable series of bonds here. Next. And just to wrap it up, obviously, on your agenda for this evening is the ordinance that would authorize the issuance of these certificates of obligation, approve the preliminary official statement and the notice of sale. We would finish up our rating process. We had our rating meetings last week. We would anticipate receiving those ratings back by the 10th and distribute the offering document, the preliminary official statement, by the 13th, receive bids on February 22nd, and that's effectively when we lock in the interest rates. And then we proceed to the Attorney General's Office for review and approval and closing by March 22nd, about a month after we lock in the rates. And that's what we had prepared. Happy to answer any questions.
Great presentation. Drew. A couple of quick questions on the slides. The rates, the rates that we're talking about at 408, and we talked, you talked about the labor, the labor report, which was positive, depending how you look at it, but rates went up quite a bit, too. You're saying only 20 basis points? I was thinking more like 40, 50, maybe.
Treasury rates went up a whole lot more than muni rates did.
Yeah, okay.
So you're right. The 10-year treasury went up about 30 basis points.
Right. I didn't think about CL, yeah, muni CLs maybe not quite as much.
Not as much. They tend to lag, so could be an ugly next few days.
True. So, yeah, we're still out there for a couple of weeks.
Right.
The other question I had, do you remember where we priced last year? It was 2-something, right? It was in the 02s. But I think these are still historically pretty competitive rates as we look at the chart.
That's right.
And our ratings are Moody's and S&amp;P, is that right?
That's right.
Do we have any preliminary ideas? Are we going to keep the same ratings last year? Are we going up, down, or?
We should keep the same. We basically, in our, in our conversations, which had considerable number of city staff people supporting us in that, well, not supporting me, I didn't say a word, they did all the work, but in that conversation, I may be the closer, is about all I am. And so we did prod a little bit for how they were feeling, and both of the rating analysts said the magic words, which are, we don't see any rating pressure on this rating. So even with a relatively large issue here, we don't expect to see any move in the rate. We had a considerable discussion with Moody's because they changed the game on us. They changed their criteria in the past year. And so we did a lot of homework in advance, preparing for that call, and worked with the city staff to understand what metrics had changed with Moody's and, and quite frankly, that we, we don't stack up as well under their new criteria as we did their old criteria. So we just came out and asked, is your new criteria going to have any effect on our rating? And they said no.
And ultimately, the execution and the pricing, right? So, which sounds like it'll be okay there. I just, just the overall comment on it, you know, every year, we, we look at all the backed-up CIP projects, and there's, I don't know, $2, $3 billion worth that we could actually quantify, and we have to always narrow it down to, you know, what we can, we can put these COs out for. And it's a bigger one this year than normal, but I think that we've done a lot of work on narrowing it down and making sure we have the, as you mentioned, having the adequate cash flow, not putting too much debt on the city and having adequate cash flow, and matching the term, the debt term with the life of the asset, which is, I like the complexity. On page, on page 28, where we're kind of mixing debt service terms amongst and between the different funds, it's, you got to use some, an extra layer of logic there, but I like the way that that's thought through. Again, I like this, again, this is a bigger CO than normal, but we're investing in ourselves here, and the rates are still pretty decent. And if you go down the list on page 23, virtually all of these are infrastructure needs that we have, and this barely scratches the surface, as every year, we go through all the different infrastructure needs of the city and try to figure out how do, how do we prioritize these 20 or 30 projects? So anyway, good job and good luck on pricing the next couple of weeks. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor, we're going to have, we're going to have Nick stay with us here for the next work session. It's a discussion of the first quarter fiscal year 2022, 2023, financial and investment report. I'll say preempt, Nick, for a moment, it's a strong start to the year, but it is just that, it's just the first 90 days. So won't steal any more thunder, Nick. You can take it from here.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So as Bradley said, we're here to go over the first quarter financial report. It's through December 31st, 2022. So the first quarter is the unannounced financial statements of the city, and includes non-financial metrics that are the most current, and includes the projections for the funds and a comparison to last year's actuals through the period. All right, so the first one is the general fund. So for the general fund, we set the budget at 175.1 million for the fiscal year. Through the first quarter, we've brought in $64 million, and the largest increase is related to interest on investments due to the changes in the market value of investments and resetting that back-to-book value at the beginning of the year. The budget for expenditures is set at 184 million, and expenses so far through the period are 56.5 million. Through the year, through the quarter, we've seen higher property tax and sales tax collections compared to last year, and expenses are about 12.2 million more than last year primarily from encumbrances and increases in personnel costs. So this slide shows our projection. So through the first quarter, with preliminary data, we're projecting revenues to exceed budget by a little over 5%, and the expenses are going to come in about 5% under as well. So the water fund, so the budget for the water fund for revenues was about almost $63 million for the year. So far, we've collected about a quarter of that, and it's about 1.5 million more than last year. Expenses are, were set at just short of 63 million, so very balanced budget, and expenses through the quarter, including encumbrances, are nearly 20 million, and they're about 9.6 more than last year, primarily because of capital expenditures related to property purchase that was approved in '22 but closed in '23, as well as increased costs for supplies due to inflation. So this slide shows our projection for the water fund. So preliminary estimates, and again, this is all dependent on weather. So if it's drier, better, it's wetter, the numbers are going to come down 111% through the first quarter, and expenses are projected to be slightly over budget. And you'll see so far this year, it's actually been a wetter year to the start of the year. So wastewater, revenues are budgeted at 41.3 million, and so through the quarter, we've collected 11.3 million, and they're about 900,000 more than last year. For wastewater, after the billions through February, we'll be able to have a very good idea of what the overall revenues will be for the year because of the winter quarter averaging for bills. Expenses are 44 million, so we plan to draw down funds, excess fund balance for the wastewater fund. They total 7.6 million through the quarter, so wastewater and water in general just does a really good job of managing revenues and expenses throughout the year. They're about 1.0 million more than last year, and it's primarily due to professional services and increases in flows. Because it's been wetter, that means what we pay to WMRs, which is the other expenses classification, those go up when it's wetter and there's more rain. All right, through the quarter, we're projecting revenues to almost be 30% more than budget and expenses to be just slightly under budget. So WMRs, budget for revenues was budgeted at $15 million. We've brought in 4.4 million through the quarter, and they're higher this year because it's been a wetter year, as well as increased charges for service, fees related to development and capital expenditures. and capital expenditures. Expenses are, were set at about 15 million as well. We spent about 5.3 through the quarter, and they're due, they're higher, 3 million higher through the quarter because of increased supply costs and capital expenditures. So WMRs revenues are projected to be about 103% of budget and expenses at this point, very rough, 85%. All right, solid waste has collected 8.3 through the quarter, or 2 million more than last year through the quarter, primarily due to the rate increase that council approved as part of the '23 budget. Expenses are in line with revenues through the quarter, but they're 3.5 million higher, primarily from capital expenditures related to equipment purchases and encumbrances for professional services, which is generally temporary services for solid waste. Revenues are projected to exceed budget and expenses are projected to come under budget through the first quarter. Airport fund, so revenues were budgeted at $3 million, primarily from intergovernmental revenues, which is grants, primarily CARES Act funding. Through the quarter, we've collected 788,000, which is 150,000 more than last year. Expenses are 3.6 million was the budget, and we're at 1.5 through the quarter, primarily because of encumbering funds primarily for professional services.
So the airport fund is the federal funds primarily that are designated for the renovation? Is that correct?
So those would be CARES Act, the intergovernmental revenue is going to be our CARES Act grant money, so primarily, this, this one will be for operations. Any grants for, the AIP grants would be in our capital fund for the airport.
Okay.
So you won't see them on this. This is just the operational fund.
Okay, got it.
So from this slide, you can see that revenues are projected to be about 14% more than budget. Expenses are projected to be about 7% less than budget. All right, convention services. So through the quarter, we've collected 2.4 million, primarily a result of increased hotel motel tax, which is up $300,000 this year compared to last year. Expenses are budgeted at 7.6 million and total 2.6 through the quarter, and are higher because of encumbrances and personnel costs, which are kind of offset because there's no transfer for capital improvements this year. So because of the way hotel motel taxes have started out the year, we're projecting revenues to exceed budget by over 25% and expenses to be about 85%. So the Ranger Hall of Fame, so revenues through the quarter are 481,000, about a quarter of the budget, and they're higher this year compared to '22, primarily because of increased transfers in from the general fund to help support capital expenditures at the Ranger Hall of Fame, including the roof, replacing the roof and a new deck. Expenses are budgeted at 2.2 million, which is an increase from last year for those said projects. 395,000 has been spent so far, and it's only an increase of 33,000 so far this year. All right, and so for revenues, we're projecting them to exceed budget by 4% and expenses to date, because we haven't spent anything on capital really so far, is about 76%. And so those numbers will become clear as we move through the second quarter. All right, Cameron Park Zoo, so revenues through the quarter are about 1.1 million. Year-over-year revenues are down about 180,000 due to attendance being down, about 9,500 visitors, as well as from transition for the cafe to a coffee shop. And so that area's been closed down as they've been doing remodels, installing the new coffee machines, and getting that up and running. Expenses were budgeted at 8.4 million through, for '23. Through the quarter, we spent $2 million, which is right on line with where we should be as far as budget goes. And the year-over-year increase is about 414,000, which is really related to capital expenditures So for the zoo, we're projecting revenues and expenses both to be about 83% of budget, so both are going to be under what we budgeted. And this can all flip very easily based off a very good spring. So warmer weather, dry weather could improve this significantly. All right, Cottonwood, so revenues at Cottonwood are budgeted at $3 million. Revenues so far are 719,000, and revenues from operations are 95,000 more than last year. Expenses are budgeted at 2.9 million, and so far, we've expended 950,000, which is about 33% of the budget, which is 467,000 more than last year due to encumbrances for temp So for Cottonwood, we're projecting revenues to be right on with budget and expenses to be about 85% of budget. So drainage, so the budget for revenues for drainage was 7.3 million, and that's based off of 114,000 equivalent residential units of impervious service, impervious surface. So far through the quarter, we've collected 1.5 million, which is about 20% of the budget. Revenues are 94,000 more than last year from a 10-cent increase in the rate, as well as continued efforts by both public works and IT to ensure that all customers are being built. Expenses are budgeted at 7.8 million and total about 1.5. So the department's been doing a good job of keeping revenues and expenses in line with one another. There are 118, 118, 814,000 higher this year compared to last year from capital expenditures, increased professional services, and additional personnel costs. So at this point, we're projecting revenues to be about 85% and expenses to be 60%. For the drainage, we will add that this is just the second year of operations, so our projections are something refined for this fund. So transit, revenues are budgeted at 9.3 million for '23. We've collected 2.7 million, and revenues are about 1.1 million higher year-over-year through intergovernmental revenues, which is grants and agreements with other jurisdictions. Expenses are budgeted at 9.7 million and total 3.1 through the quarter, and they're 1.6 million higher year-over-year due to capital expenditures, the purchase of vehicles that didn't occur in the prior years. And so for revenues for our transit, we're projecting them to be about 95% and expenses to be about 86%. All right, and so we also wanted to find you with information about working capital and fund balance for all of these funds, and these are the fiscal year '22 audited financial statement balances. And I think in your package, you guys all received a copy of the annual comprehensive report that we just completed. And so you'll see on the slide, we list all the funds that are as part of the audit. So the one that you won't see on here is WMRs, because for financial statement purposes, we roll that up into the wastewater fund. And included in here is the different fund balances and working capital for each of the funds, and then the policy requirements that are in the financial policy statements that you guys approve every year as part of the budget process, and then any excess working capital or fund balance that exists. And so going specifically into the general fund, in the pie chart, you'll see the various fund balance categories and how everything for the general fund is categorized and what it's intended use for. So the blue, about 15%, is the unassigned excess fund balance, and then the orangish color is the bulk of the unassigned balance, and that's for our policy required minimum, which is about $49 million. And then the, all the other different classifications of the fund balance that exist within the general fund, including WEMAC and our PEG fund. And then on the bar chart, you'll see the intended uses of the excess fund balance. So we plan to keep a fair amount of it in the general fund to allow for future growth, so we're not having to increase the tax rate or do other things in order to support increased revenue growth in the general fund. We have the money in the fund already, and so we want to, we'd rather keep it there and allow us to do other things and achieve your strategic goals. In addition, about 31,000, and you'll see that in the budget amendment that's on the agenda tonight, was for the multipurpose kitchen remodel. 350,000 is for the small business grants program. About 126,000 is for carryforward items related to like neighborhood grants. And then lastly, we're going to transfer $6 million to the special projects reserve for future capital improvements.
I think when you've got extra money lying around, renovating the kitchen's number one. I like that.
I mean, if you've been in there, you know it's necessary.
It's needed.
All right, and so as part of the Public Funds Investment Act, we're required to give you an update every quarter about our investments. So through the quarter, our investments totaled 641 million, which was an increase of about $12 million from the prior quarter. The unrealized loss, which we talked about last quarter, has decreased by 1 million, partly as interest rates long-term have come down or had come down, as well as investments have matured, and so those ones have rolled off as well. So as of the end of the quarter, there was just under $10 million. Investment income for the year and through the quarter was 3.5 million, and our year's maturity has decreased about half a year from 0.59 years in the prior quarter. And so our portfolio is yielding about 2.54%, which is lower than taxable, which is nearly 4% as of December of 2022, which is generally expected in a rising interest rate environment. All right, so just in summary, the budget was set based on the activity that we saw last year, and our expectations for the upcoming year, we're still seeing strong sales and hotel motel tax revenues through the first quarter. However, from appearances, it looks like the growth in sales tax revenues have been slowing and may have peaked earlier this year, but overall, most operations are in line with budget through the first quarter. Any questions?
Oh, there we go. I'll just make some comments here. Nick, great job, great report, great format. And the, I like how you're, this thing gets better every quarter you come in here, I'll just say that. And if you go, starting on page 115, you gave us the highlights of each fund and each, each of the major funds, which is fantastic. If you go back to page 115, where you dive in to more data, which I love, where you're showing year-to-date totals, last year's first quarter totals, this year's budget totals, and how we comp and run comparisons against each of those at each fund level. And then you further, you comment, have nice comments at the end of each section. And what I like about, we've developed these KPIs, key performance indicators, and the trend analysis, too, because I think it's really helpful for us to put some strategy as we see trends and as we see shortfalls and as we see the numbers. So I like where this reporting has gone under your leadership. The, the two things that jumped out at me in the, in the first quarter was the, the sales tax, very strong, 8% better year-over-year, almost 20% better than budget, and I hope we can keep that sales tax up because that really helps, at least in my mind, that's more revenue for the general fund, that we're able to be more thoughtful about how we set that tax rate for the property tax. So as long as that stays strong, and the trends have been pretty good this year. The water deal, it, it concerns me a little bit. The, but I'm sure we'll be fine, it's not that far off, but we're asking people to conserve, and they, our citizens are, are doing the right thing, our residents are conserving, which hurts our revenue a little bit, obviously, so that fund is, is not looking quite as strong, but I'm sure once we get all the rains in, and we'll, I'll feel better about that one, too. Golf course, doing great. I like the way that just seems to rock and roll every quarter, that he runs a good amenity out there for the citizens. And the convention deal, the hot tax, the hotel motel tax is looking very strong along with the, the sales tax. The hotel motel is 40% higher than budget, 20% higher than year-over-year, so just fantastic numbers there. So anyway, a good first quarter, I think, by all measures. I'm sure when it starts raining heavily again, we'll, I'll feel better about the water deal. And I'm sure that the sales tax will continue to, to, to be strong. Good trends. Appreciate the report, Nick.
Nick, this is an excellent report. I echo what Councilmember Holmes said. It's really great to get reports like this where you see the positive financial situation we find ourselves in, and I do agree that it's going to be interesting to see how the rest of the year goes. We don't know exactly what the economy has ahead of us, and we know that sales tax and hotel motel tax can be volatile, but this is a really strong beginning, and I'm really thankful for that. I'm really thankful for our city staff and their conservative budgeting principles that really keeps us in a safe and secure place. Thank you for all your efforts and your work, and I look forward to getting a great report the next round. Thanks, team.
Thanks, Nick. So what I heard the mayor say is he wants it to be just as good next time in terms of the numbers, so.
Yeah, only you can control that, Nick.
We'll see how that goes.
He will. I have great faith in Nick.
That's right. Good, good one. Well, we've got something for everybody on the agenda today. Our next presenter is not going to be as much about the numbers, right Fiona? Now, we've got a work session 066, which will be a lot more fun, is discussion of the Cameron Park Zoo public art donation request in the form of a sculpture titled "On the Road to Extinction." The city has received requests for this public art to be installed at Cameron Park Zoo, and Fiona Bond, who serves as CEO of Creative Waco, will be providing us a presentation of the, of the piece and, as well as working us through the details and installation process. So Fiona, thanks for always being a great steward and helping us with public art in the community, and look forward to hearing your presentation.
I was, I was going to offer some numbers if you wanted some, but.
Three, seven.
That's enough. You can do all kinds of artistic things with numbers. Well, it's always a pleasure to be here, Mayor, elected members of City Council, City Manager and team. It's always a pleasure to be bringing a new public art proposal, and especially when it is a recommendation for a donation, because that's, you know, that's something that we love to see, and we really appreciate those who offer to support our community in that way. The background to this particular piece is that when Judge Kenneth Winston's star passed away in summer of 2022, his friends, Betsy and Clifton Robinson, wanted to find a unique way to remember him and to honor him and his wife Alice and the, the many things that they have done in and for our community. When Waco Sculpture Zoo was installed back in 2020, the Robinsons remembered how the stars had loved a sculpture named "On the Road to Extinction" by one of the Sculpture Zoo artists, Solomon Basov. And they, the stars had hoped to gather a group of donors to purchase that particular piece for the zoo. And the Robinsons now propose to purchase this artwork and donate it in honor of the stars and in recognition of Cameron Park Zoo's vital role in saving endangered animals. So this is the proposed artwork. It's by Solomon Basov, who is based in California. He's a very well-respected artist, and he has works all over the United States, and six of his much-loved sculptures are already part of Waco's Sculpture Zoo. He works in a material which is a hand-sculpted concrete, GFRC, which has integral, integral color pigments on a welded armature. And those are, that's the same material as the other sculptures that he has in the Sculpture Zoo. But unlike those sculptures, this one also includes a 1928 Model A Ford, which is essentially sealed, encased, protected with Everco primer, lacquer sealer, and Sherman Williams 2K urethane. and Sherman Williams two K urethane anti-graffiti coating. The piece depicts several animals that are in danger of extinction without the kinds of valuable conservation efforts that entities like Cameron Park Zoo are undertaking as part of their mission. And then just to give you some of the artwork specifications here, it is just over twelve and a half feet long, nine and a half feet high, and then just over five feet wide. It weighs approximately nineteen hundred pounds. It's designed to be moved as needed with a forklift, and it doesn't anchor into, into position. It doesn't have to be bolted down, so it can be moved to wherever, wherever it's wanted. Obviously, if you have a forklift. The artist warrants that the artwork has been created and finished with consideration to its strength, longevity, safety, and durability in a public setting. And it is designed to be easily cleaned with a hose or shop vac with weep openings for rain and water to make sure there's no pooling of water. All the movable parts are secured with loctite metal glue to prevent tampering or theft. These are the other artworks by Solomon Basov already in Waco. And then the proposed plaque to go with this piece, you can see in this rendering, the plaque is proposed to go right between the legs of the cheetah and above the wheel to read information about the artist, the title of the piece and the date, and then given by Betsy and Clifton Robinson in memory of Judge Ken Starr and in honor of Alice Starr and in recognition of Cameron Park Zoo's work to save endangered species. The budget for this piece, and so hence the, the donation that is being proposed, is that the sculpture itself is costing two hundred thousand dollars, which would be donated by the Robinsons. The plaque casting and installation would be three thousand dollars, also donated by the Robinsons. An anonymous donor has come forward with ten thousand dollars to support the transportation, transportation of the piece from California and installation. And then the administration legal side of, you know, just handling the negotiations with donors, artists, and organizing the delivery covered by Creative Waco. The total that that comes to is two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, and there is no request from the city in that. And so the request that we are bringing is that the City of Waco accepts the artwork into its public art collection, following, of course, inspection and approval by city staff that it is indeed as described by the artist and that, that it is, you know, a quality control assessment. And then secondly, that the City of Waco adopt ongoing care, maintenance, and safe presentation of the artwork in a public setting in accordance with established best practices as per the other pieces in the public art collection for the city. And then thirdly, that it be located in or around Cameron Park Zoo with the plaque recognizing artists, donors, and honorees. And this, the approval of this item is on today's consent calendar. I would welcome your questions and comments.
Questions, comments?
I'll start Holmes here. Fiona, thanks for putting this together. I think it's just a great way to recognize and honor Judge Starr and Alice Starr, and really appreciate what Clifton and Betsy Robinson have done here, not only in this, this project, but the rest of the zoo sculpture where they had a hand in, in, in getting that all put together. The bronze cattle drive, and Clifton and Betsy have had a, had a, a, a good leadership in our public art program. And this is just another example of, of doing cool stuff that everybody can enjoy and honoring a, a great, a great way going. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Just briefly, I guess this is an actual automobile. Is that correct? It's not a, that part is not a sculpture.
Underneath the protective coating, it is an actual automobile, yes. A historic Model A Ford. The wheels, there are several parts that have been replaced by the concrete substance that Solomon works with. So for example, the wheels and tire, the tires are concrete, not actual rubber.
And what does the license plate fiduci mean?
That's, that's the company of the artist. That's the, that's, the artist goes by fiduci, that's, that's their company in California.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for this report and update on this very, very cute and lovely project that the Robinsons always seem to come across, especially for the City of Waco's sculptures and all up and down university parks and into the zoo. They're, they're always so tremendous about giving to, to us. And this is just another project that they have donated to us, and I appreciate it. I appreciate the, the report as well, Fiona. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fiona. We, we know that with the, the many donors that have made public art a priority and under your stewardship, we are well on our way to being an art-forward city. One of the things that you mentioned, so which, and that may be a Bradley question as opposed to a you question. It says that city staff does the approval. Who, who does that?
Approval of which part, council member?
In the presentation, it said that final approval would be done basically to inspect that, that it is what it says it is. Is that Parks?
Yeah, it'd likely be Assistant Director Tom Balk.
Okay.
Get a head nod from Tom or Jonathan. Yeah, there's Tom down here.
I was like, wait a minute.
He's, I'm too short to see him. Tom, would you like to say something?
Oh, he's right here.
Wow. Yeah, just a quick touch on that.
That's why I missed him, because he was sitting back there and then he moved.
Thought this question could come. So we, we don't have experience with this specific piece yet. It's in California. So we'll be involved in kind of going through the same process we went through, vetting the artwork that came to us for the Sculpture Trail in Cameron Park and along the river. So if there's anything that catches our eye to, you know, further mediate and work with the artist or locally to secure or place or whatever, we're committed to assisting to make sure that it can be provided to the public in a safe way.
I feel like Tom, you've got really experience at this over the last few years.
Other questions, comments?
Thank you, Fiona, for this presentation. The Robinson family plays such a critical role in our community for a variety of reasons, but their commitment to public art is one that I hold in high esteem. And I'm really thankful for the improvement in our quality of life that has come to be because of their commitment to public art. You know, I love the zoo so much. It's some, a place that my family and my kids go. Our city is deeply committed to our city zoo, and it's really great to see us really being thoughtful about how to ensure that all the visitors from around the country who come to the city zoo get to have a, a first-rate experience. And I think that the artwork that leads up to the zoo and now this piece in front of the zoo is going to add value to that end. So thank you for the presentation today, and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Oh, and the last, yeah, I, I did forget. And I'm so thankful for the Starr family and, and really glad that we can honor the legacy of Judge Starr, who leaves a legacy of love of community. So again, this being in his honor makes it so special, and we're thankful for his family.
We especially love that, we know he really adored this piece and was very hopeful that it would end up being here in Waco.
That's great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor and Council, we have, our next work session is Work Session oh sixty-seven. It's discussion of current operations and upcoming projects at Waco Family Medicine. I'm going to invite Dr. Jackson Griggs up front, and we'll just spend a moment and preamble making sure the public knows, I know the council knows. We have a longstanding relationship between Waco Family Medicine and the City of Waco, and it's, it's unique in providing healthcare in small and medium-sized regions. And I look forward to Jackson giving you the overview of what all exciting things they have going on at Waco Family Medicine.
Thanks so much, Bradley. Thank you, Mayor Meek and distinguished members of City Council. Thank you, City Manager's Office back in the back. Appreciate all that you guys do to, to partner with us. And it's a real pleasure to be here today. I've, I've got a lot of content in a very condensed period of time, so I'm going to move through the information, but I can dive deeper in, in any one of, of these slides. General outline of, of what we're going to cover, our mission, some updates from the Center of the Institute, facilities, updates, mention of our strategic plan, although I won't go into great detail unless you're particularly interested, and then obviously opportunity to answer any questions. So the, the mission statement of Waco Family Medicine is to improve the health and wellness of the underserved residents of the heart of Texas by providing effective access to high-quality, comprehensive primary care and, and an exemplary training environment for tomorrow's family physicians and other healthcare professionals. And I'd love to spend thirty minutes just unpacking our mission statement, but I want to, won't do that, just zero in on this one thing. And that is that we provide access to high-quality, comprehensive primary care. Well, in eighteen sixty-three, President Lincoln established the National Academies of Sciences, Engineering, and Medicine, which is a paragovernment organization that still writes, it's a kind of a think tank, policy papers. And it wrote probably the most important primary care work in twenty-five years. And, and it published a, a really important statement that I want to bring before you. The National Academy of Science, Engineering, and Medicine said, "Primary care is the only healthcare component where an increased supply is associated with better population health and more health, and more equitable outcomes. If you increase the amount of primary care, then you get better population health and more equitable outcomes, not demonstrated by other components of the healthcare system. For this reason," the authors state, "primary care is a common good, making the strength and quality of the country's primary care services a public concern." So I think it's really important that they're having this conversation in this forum because obviously the strength of our primary care infrastructure in our community is of public concern. So, so why, why do we exist? So if we intend to have a thriving community, a community where, where people want to live and to work and to raise their families, whole person health is foundational. And yet, the, the, the Texas healthcare infrastructure is dysfunctional for millions and millions and millions of residents. And, and even our local healthcare ecosystem can be alienating and, and disorienting and create uncertainty and challenges for, for everyone. But, but particularly for folks who have experienced disadvantage. Disadvantage in utero, disadvantage in their early childhood, and, and disadvantages through the structures of our society. When you're, when you're already operating at a disadvantage and your, and your body betrays you, who do you, who do you turn to in the community? Well, Waco Family Medicine stepped in fifty-three years ago to fill a need in our community, to, to, to build a family medicine workforce and to shoulder the challenges of comprehensive primary care in a community where up until that time, city and county struggled desperately to, to manage the overwhelming health needs facing low-income families. So from the outset, this work has not been done by a, a private nonprofit organization. It has been done in close collaboration, in close partnership with the city and with the county. And any successes that we have, we, we share together with you. So hopefully you'll hear some of those successes today. And I'm going to move right into the status update here. So our center board members, you'll recognize a lot of these names. Wonderfully wise, diverse group of directors, including a number of members who have served our community publicly very, very well. Over half of our board members are patients of ours, and that's consistent across all community health centers. Want to show this image to you. And I may have shared this image before when I presented to City Council, but I think it tells a really, really, really important story. So this image is a graphic that, that demonstrates the life expectancy of an individual at the time of birth. So the redder you get, the shorter your lifespan, the shorter your life expectancy at the time of birth. And, and you see a pattern here. If you're born in, in Woodway, you know, your lifespan, the, the expected average lifespan is eighty-five, ninety years old. If you're born in Iswaco, obviously, your life expectancy is, is much shorter. There are structural realities that have led to this kind of disparate outcome. And while this is about life expectancy, it's about mortality, longevity. You can imagine all of the, the other health outcomes that would mirror this, this same graphic. Well, we've built geographically our clinics to, to parallel this, this same general pattern. So every little blue dot you're seeing here on, on the map here is one of our clinics. And so you see that, that, that there's a, that there's been building with intentionality where the need is, is greatest. So we have fifteen sites, and, and some of those sites also include dental services. Many of them include mental health services. Many also include prenatal care, maternity care services. Our clinicians, many of them are on staff at both hospitals, Ascension Providence, Baylor Scott and White Hillcrest. We have a full-service pharmacy, a laboratory, radiology, including ultrasonography, plane films, DEXA scan, CT scan, and eligibility to help folks access the services they need. A number of special projects and programs. Behavioral Health and Substance Use Disorder Program that's won awards at state and national levels. We've, we're addressing a number of non-medical drivers of health. Food is Medicine Program, a wellness center, a medical legal partnership that helps folks access help for health-harming legal needs in collaboration with Greater Waco Legal Services. And then we have a number of collaborations with the Waco McLennan County Public Health District. I'm currently, just recently, was S to B Board Chair of, of that advisory board. We have a longstanding HIV collaboration. We have a relationship with the R, R centering pregnancy, which is a group pregnancy, group visit-based pregnancy education program and the WIC program. And we've just asked one of our physicians who has expertise in public health and social determinants of health to liaise with the, the health district to improve our coordination and collaboration. So we're excited about what's going to come out of that relationship. I think this is a, an important synopsis slide because it tells you the scope of, of our work. Now, this is across all fifteen sites. But in twenty twenty-two, we saw sixty-one thousand six hundred unique individuals. And we had just shy of a quarter million total encounters. That's primary care, mental health, oral health, dentistry. That trend line for the number of patients that we've seen has grown over the past eight years by about ten thousand. And by age, our, our patients that we saw last year, a little over a third were children and adolescents. Ten percent were greater than sixty-five years old. But, but I want to draw your attention to the eighteen to sixty-four-year-old. That's fifty-six percent of those that we took care of. These are, this is our workforce in, in, in Waco. If someone doesn't have employer-sponsored, sponsored insurance, if they're not someone who's a full-time employee that gets their, then the vast majority of those individuals are going to, when they need primary care, are going to come see us. And, and so I, while the tendency is to think about healthcare as principally a, a, a service to take care of those who are sick, I'd, I'd also argue that there's a lot of economic development work that we do by virtue of keeping the workforce healthy. work that we do by virtue of keeping the workforce healthy. By income, almost three out of four patients that we see fall below the federal poverty level. Of course, you know that that's the threshold at which individuals are able to, they're able to take care of their very basic needs. So, three out of four of our patients fall below that threshold. Last year, that was for an individual, that federal poverty level, 13,550 for an individual's income, or for a family of four, a mama with three babies, that's 27,750 is their household income. So, three out of four of our patients fell below that threshold. 21% are between 100 and 200% of federal poverty level, and then only 5% of our patient population are more than if you're in a family of four, it would be roughly $56,000 for a household. Again, about three out of four of our patients self-identify as non-white. Among those who come see us, the uninsured population is about a third of all of those that we see. Also want to draw your attention to this part of the pie graph that's purple because Medicaid at 42%, I'd be really optimistic if we could maintain that, but this is a little bit of a temporary inflation of our Medicaid payer mix. Now, this graph starts from the right and goes left in terms of date. So, what you see on the far right is 2016, approaching 40% of Medicaid, and then you see the steady downward trend of Medicaid. And then, we had the public health emergency where folks weren't getting removed from Medicaid. Folks who got on Medicaid were able to stay on Medicaid. And so, we saw a temporary sort of inflation of our Medicaid numbers, which is really helpful to us, but that begins to unravel April 1. And so, we're facing a cliff there that's very concerning to us. How do you fund an FQHC? Well, in Waco, here is our, here's our breakup of our revenues. Patient care revenues account for 63%. Our pharmacy, which is a special kind of pharmacy, 340B pharmacy, it's a designation that allows us to collect, so we actually buy our inventory at wholesale, and then when we bill Medicaid Advantage Plan or a commercial insurance for a drug cost, we collect that differential and invest that into patient care services. That's part of our, the way we're able to subsidize some of our care for uninsured is through our pharmacy. Counts for 22% of our revenues, and this other category is 15%. Okay, what does that, what does that 15% include? So, about half of that 15% is residency support, 33% is federal grants, and then City of Waco is 11, and McLennan County is 7. And this kind of does a little, this doesn't exactly show the full support of McLennan County because in addition, their indigent health program is kind of an insurance substitute that flows to us in this patient care category. So, McLennan, this is just the stipend that McLennan County provides every year. So, City of Waco, 11, and McLennan, 7, of that 15% of other. So, what is that 11% of the 15%, or 1.5% of our overall budget? What does that fund? So, the cost of uninsured primary care among Waco residents, I'm not talking about a whole population, just focusing in on Waco residents here, is almost $7 million. And so, there, that gets divided up among different pools. We subsidize about 72% of that. Patients contribute about 11% of that, and the city covers the cost of about 1 in 6 patients who comes to see us who are uninsured. So, very helpful, and going forward as our population grows and as we have more and more uninsured, it ends up not being sufficient for the needs that exist in our community. And there are those numbers spelled out here. So, I'm going to speed up a little bit because I'm a little behind here. Our institutes, our academic arm, founded in 1970, we have 36 residents, have graduated 464 family doctors, 81% of the practicing family doctors in our community are graduates of ours. We have a Sports Medicine Fellowship, a Hospice Palliative Care Medicine Fellowship, and a Clinical Informatics Fellowship under the Institute. Our national ranking is in the top 2% of programs, top-tier board scores, and we're doing important work like creating decision support that's been adopted all over the country, and in fact, in multiple countries across the globe, and that decision support has been our faculty working in collaboration with Massachusetts General Psychiatry Academy. So, these are Harvard professors in the Department of Psychiatry. So, we've developed decision support for primary care doctors who are taking care of mental health conditions that's being adopted around the country and endorsed by some of the top names in medicine. So, one of the exciting things is happening in Councilmember Horner's district, and that is the building of our new central campus. Quick update on that, this is the topographical image with Cole Cord being there at the bottom here. We ran out of space as the need grew and as primary care was being transformed into a team sport as opposed to a one-on-one sport. We needed more space, and so, we have doubled our clinical space, we've tripled our overall space, and we planned this to have growth capacity. Beautiful community gathering space out in front, a spacious lobby with a community marketplace where community social services and partners have space to help take care of issues that patients face that are outside of the biomedical domain. A pharmacy that we're really excited about, which will grow our capacity to serve our patients. Pharmacy teaching kitchen to teach folks how to cook meals that are healthy. A Wellness Center where we're able to help folks lower their risk for chronic disease and manage things like depression, chronic pain, heart failure in our Wellness Center. We've raised over $30 million at this point, and here's the breakdown of where those dollars, incredibly generous outpouring from individual philanthropists in our community. Just, would be hard to sufficiently express my gratitude for the individuals and the families who have stepped up and said, "Yes, this is work that we want to support." 26% grants, and our foundation is matching 21% of the dollars. As you know, the city from the ARP dollars has put $2.5 million into this, and so, want to again express my gratitude to the city for that contribution of the work. Construction is moving ahead. I just want to highlight one bullet for the sake of time. To date, over 70% of our contract dollars for our subs have been awarded to local subs, and that was something that was very, very important to us and continues to be something that we're monitoring, tracking very closely. Just a quick overhead view. You can see that we've, we're in the process of all, doing all the important leveling. We've carved off some of the clinic here, the demo, partial demo of the clinic here, leveling, and here's where the clinic will be, right here, as it, again, abuts Cole Cord. Another exciting emerging relationship and project is a collaboration between Heart of Texas Behavioral Health Network and Waco Family Medicine on Imperial Drive. That's a building that is being built by Behavioral Health Network, and we will operate a 3,000-square-foot clinic on their property so that folks who come in a mental health crisis can access continuity care, so that they can stay on their medications and see a doctor for comprehensive primary care, and we're really excited about what this will mean for the community. Daniel Thompson's done a great job in terms of this design and project. Now, I'm going to wrap up with just a glance at our strategic plan. We have five pillars of our strategic plan: financial stability, access to primary care, equity, promoting equity in all functions of the organization, advancement, and clinical And as we try to implement that strategic plan and to do the work, it's important, and this is my last slide, to note the challenges. It is exceedingly difficult to take care of individuals in poverty in the state of Texas. Our state falls 50th out of 50 states in terms of its insurance, its uninsured rate. We're dead last in terms of the number of individuals who are uninsured. Lacking insurance is associated with early death and a whole host of chronic disease adverse outcomes. For states that did not expand Medicaid, there is a bridge, what was originally designed as a bridge to Medicaid expansion in the form of $1115 waiver dollars. Texas has received some $30 billion in waiver dollars over the past decade. None of that's come to FQHCs. It goes to hospitals and local mental health authorities, but health centers don't see those dollars. Because we're a non-expansion state, we have 15% more uninsured compared with the national average FQHC. We have a lot of patients who are uninsured, and of course, those patients, you know, we largely subsidize their care. We've seen aggressive inflation, supplies, it's a hard labor market, equipment. The supplemental federal COVID dollars are ending, and as I demonstrated, the public health emergency ending will create some new realities for us. So, I started by saying, "We've done this together. I want to update you on the good work that's happened as well as the realities of the financial circumstances created by the state and that exist as the nature of our kind of longstanding arrangement that we've had in the city, which is that county and city contribute to this effort of keeping our population well." It is going to be challenging days, months, potentially years ahead, and I want to prepare you because I might be coming back to you saying, you know, "We've done our best, and yet the need exceeds our capacity." And I'm really thrilled that the margins look strong for the city, and I want you to keep in mind those who are suffering and sick, who are in poverty, who also contribute to our community in really meaningful ways when you're thinking about the surplus that you have. And that's all I have. I'm totally happy to answer any of a variety of questions.
Questions, Collins.
I have a question. I have dropped off several community members at your clinic there, our Wellness Center on North 15th. I've never gone inside. I drop them off, and then they call me when they're ready to be picked up, but my question is, I know that the doctors see them there, but what happens when a patient needs to go to the hospital? Do they take the doctor that treats them there at that center, clinic, or whatever, into the hospital, or how does that work?
So, Councilmember Horner, your question is, after someone is treated, if that person who comes in needs treatment that same day, or just in general, later on, if they're being seen at the hospital, or they're admitted from the ER into the hospital who sees them? Maybe let me answer both. If someone comes into our clinic and we can't manage an acute exacerbation of chronic disease or an acute episode of a serious condition in the clinic, then the transportation is through EMS. We call an ambulance, and they come pick them up and they usher them to the hospital. Now, who takes care of them? And incidentally, we bridge that care by calling the hospital, getting in touch with the receiving doc, and explaining the case. We do what we can to stabilize them in the clinic before that transfer, but we bridge it through just telephone conversation with the accepting physician. Once someone is stabilized in the ER and is being admitted to the floor, like, I'm going to just give you a hypothetical. So, 68-year-old with known congestive heart failure comes into clinic and their oxygen saturation is 72, and we give them oxygen, and it comes up, it doesn't come up high enough, and they're really struggling to breathe, and we think this is somebody who needs to be hospitalized, got to get the fluid off, send them via ambulance to the hospital, the emergency department stabilizes them and says, "Yeah, you need to be up on the floor for a few days for care." So, who sees them then in the hospital and cares for them? So, at both hospitals, we have teams of our physicians who take care of patients in the hospital. We, not entirely, but the majority of those teams that are admitting teams are academic teams. So, the supervising physician is an academic family doctor who is sort of on the cutting edge of evidence-based medicine, and we have teams of residents who are seeing that patient, checking on that patient frequently.
I was just wondering how that worked. Thank you. And the only reason I'm going to say this is I just got over a COVID episode, and when the doctor prescribed me medicine, my family went to pick it up at HEB, and there was no charge. And on the, you know how they tell you what the medicine is for? It said that the federal government paid for that medicine, so I didn't have to pay for that medicine. I said, "Wow."
In general, you know, the treatment for Paxlovid has been covered by, treatment of COVID has been covered by the, kind of an unusual circumstance, a sort of one-off. Usually, medications are big barriers for patients in terms of getting access. Through our 340B pharmacy, a lot of our medicines are $4, $5 for a prescription that would be very, very expensive outside of our system. So, a lot of our patients have access to medication. Now, if one of our patients is getting Paxlovid, they also get that for free through the federal government.
Yeah, that was the name of the medicine, Paxlovid. Thank you. Thank you, doctor.
Yes, ma'am.
Jackson, great presenter, Dr. Griggs, great presentation. I always appreciate your leadership and your passion and your energy. I'm just happy that Waco is the beneficiary of all that, of that leadership.
You're kind, thank you.
You serve an important part of the Waco population here, and my nature is to reduce everything to ROI, but a lot of this is, you're doing God's work here, you know, and this is something that we need to support and make sure that your plan keeps going forward. I like how you brought out the 61,000 different residents of the Waco, greater Waco area have seeked out those services, and I like that you put that 56% are in the workforce, so that, that's 35,000 workers have visited Waco Family Medicine. So, to me, that is an important element of economic development. So, this all kind of ties together, and the fact that you're in the top 2% of the programs in the US and the 90th percentile, we've got the right mix of leadership here, and I appreciate the update on the new facility, excited about that going in. Just keep up the good work.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. Appreciate that a great deal.
Thank you, Dr. Griggs. Oh, did you have to, go ahead, Councilmember Horner.
Jackson, I just want to say thank you to you and your board. You've proven to be good stewards of this community's healthcare, and I don't speak for everyone, but I speak for myself in saying that you have proven, at least to me, that you are worthy of whatever further support you may need down the road.
Thank you, Councilmember Horner. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Griggs. We appreciate this update as we always do with our community partners that we are so connected with. I have a couple of questions, some that are beyond the scope of this conversation, but I'd like to get some follow-up on that if we could.
Yes, ma'am.
Of the 15 facilities, I believe, how many are outside of Waco proper, Waco city limits proper?
We have one clinic in Belmead, one in McGregor, and one in Temple.
Okay, okay. So, it's just three of the 15. So, and that would only be two in McLennan County outside of Waco proper?
Yes.
Okay. Secondly, I know that when I first got elected, I had a meeting at Waco Family Medicine with you and Malcolm, Mayor Duncan, former Mayor Duncan, and one of the conversations that we were talking about were the residents in training. And of the 464 graduates, I knew that what was mentioned to me at the time was that there was a desire to increase the numbers of physicians of color, and I wanted to know what And I wanted to know what your progress was.
It's a very, very important question. So what we're, we are strong believers in the fact that healthcare works best when you have race-concordant doctor-patient dyads. So we want to diversify our residents, because our residents stay and work in our community, and our community is a beautifully diverse community. So four percent of medical school graduates, maybe five, four to five percent, I'm not, forgive me for not knowing it exactly, are African-American. And about half of the African-American graduates go into primary care. And so it is a challenge to get the diversity of our applicants that we want to see. And that number has increased. I wish I could cite specific numbers, but it's increased for a number of reasons. One is that we have developed, we've worked on a workforce pipeline through the CHAMPES program, which is a camp that exposes high school students to healthcare workforces. It's a partnership with Providence. We have a primary care internship where we're bringing high-achieving students into primary care early on to give them exposure, to kind of give them a vision. And these are part of, these are part of the workforce pipeline efforts within our equity efforts. Our resident recruitment, we have focused new efforts on recruiting at historically black universities, the medical schools. And so we have visited those, and will continue to have, look for opportunities to visit when they hold primary care fairs, so we can get there and kind of get in front of the students. We have set up mock interviews to give candidates experience in interviewing for primary care so that we can optimize candidates of color, so they do well when they're interviewing. We want to give them opportunities to be coached on interviews before they have an opportunity to interview. So these are, this is in collaboration with the Association of Black Family Medicine Physicians. So we set up interviews through this association where students who aren't yet interviewing, but plan to interview, get some practice in interviewing. And then, of course, you know, we've got a lot of, when we're looking at how we rank our applicants, we put a lot of stock into lived experience and the value of lived experience. So we've been very intentional about how we build that matrix there.
I was curious as to that, because I knew, you know, because that was five years ago, and just wanted to know how that was going through, because I know we talked about visiting with the HBCUs that are focused on medicine, I mean, those in and out of Texas, and, you know, with the ability to maybe follow those students or professors who you make connections with, and then follow them and hire them. Because, you know, if a whole bunch of, you know, student, or student doctors are in a barrel, we go to the barrel.
That's right. That's exactly right.
One and a half more questions quickly. So with Councilmember Rodriguez's statements about patients and how we are coming off of the federal government manna, and soon those meds that were available at no cost will no longer be, if it was any patient that goes through Waco Family Medicine as the family health organization, what happens if they cannot or do not have the ability to pay for their services?
So part of being a community health center is that when there's medical necessity, we don't turn anyone away for inability to pay. So, and it doesn't matter, even if you don't have, while we consistently ask for a nominal fee for those that fall below a hundred percent of federal poverty, that, the board has set that at ten dollars for a visit. And if somebody comes in and they need to be seen that day, and they don't have a penny in their pocket, we will waive that amount so that we don't turn away that individual who has a medical necessity.
Awesome. Thank you for that, doctor.
Lastly, this is not one of those questions to answer today, but I would like to, because you mentioned about the strategic plan, and, you know, and we were looking at the heat map of locations, and you mentioned life expectancy. If, and you used an interesting term, you said obviously, that the life expectancy in East Waco is considerably lower than that of West Waco. What is, or does Waco Family Medicine have a plan to specifically address that? Don't answer that now, because we don't have time. But I would like to see, in coordination with the strategic plan, what that looks and feels like for Waco Family Medicine specifically.
Great. Absolutely. Yes. Well, we'll talk offline on that. That's great. Thank you.
We appreciate all the things that you do for our city and community. Thank you.
Councilmember, appreciate that.
Yeah, I agree. I get what's been said, and, you know, you brought some of the challenges that you guys are facing, and we stand ready to be supportive. We recognize that, you know, on, you know, in a practical perspective, our economy can't grow if we don't have proper healthcare, but really what's more important is Waco's not going to be the city that it's called to be, it's not going to have the value set that we are charged as stewarding. We are not going to be the people that we fully are created to be if we are not coming together to love our neighbors. So I appreciate the mission of Waco Family Medicine, and I know that the culture of this council is consistent with the culture of our city, and that is to care for our neighbors. And we stand ready to continue to partner with you and look forward to a continued partnership for many years to come. Thanks for being here, Dr. Griggs.
Thank you so much, mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, mayor and council, our next presentation, we're going to invite LaShonda Mallory-Horn from Waco McLennan County Public Health District up to the podium. She's going to give us a discussion on work session oh six eight, discussion of the Waco McLennan County Active Living Plan. And we scheduled these together, I think, nicely, A, because Waco Family Medicine and the Health District are in the trenches together.
Yeah.
But also, as you'll hear from LaShonda, you've got to play good offense and good defense in public health.
For sure.
And we heard about primary care from Dr. Griggs, and now we're going to hear about an active living plan that promotes prevention and thoughtfulness around that work. So pleased to welcome LaShonda to the table.
Welcome.
Thank you all so much. It's good to see everyone. Good afternoon, mayor, councilmembers. I'm excited to share with you all our Active Living Plan. For today's work session, I'll cover the vision and background of the plan, mission and goals, the need for an active living plan, the timeline for the development, data collection methods, results, contents of the plan, and net steps. This Active Living Plan is a working document that can be used to assist in the improvement of the built environment, the development of policies and planning, and the implementation of programs that will help to improve the overall health and well-being of McLennan County residents. When we were working on this plan, we made sure we took into consideration the social determinants of health and those ten essential functions of public health that we try to strive to achieve on a regular basis. So I think this plan is putting us in line to do some really fun things here in the city and the county, and we're excited about it. The mission and goals of the plan are summed up by these three points: to make a collective statement that physical activity is a public health priority in Waco and McLennan County; to establish a multi-sector collaboration, excuse me, collaborations; to advocate for planned strategies and priorities; and also to create and plan implementation framework for the strategies and priorities in the plan. And this plan can also be paired with other documents, such as the Trails Master Plan, previously presented to the City Council by Parks and Recreation, to make the healthy choice the easy choice, which is always the goal of public health. The Active Living Plan was created in collaboration with Texas A&amp;M University School of Public Health. Doctors Tyler Prochnow and Meg Patterson led the development of the plan with the assistance of doctoral students Christian Amo, Laurel Coran, and Allison Francis. It is really important for me to also acknowledge the Health District staff that worked with Texas A&amp;M to complete this plan, which is our Public Health Education Specialist Emily Green and Baylor University graduate student Ally Steed. Based on the 2022 Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and the University of Wisconsin County Health Rankings and Roadmaps Report, McLennan County rates ninety-first in health outcomes and eightieth in health factors for the state of Texas. These rankings are used across public health to measure the health of a community and to provide a baseline that can be used to measure success of public health interventions and initiatives and programs. The Need for an Active Living Plan is based on data compiled from Secretary Data Resources as well as primary data collection. Based on the initial assessment by the plan team, it was determined that McLennan County residents report low engagement of physical activity. In 2019, twenty-eight percent of adults did not report any engagement in leisure-time physical activity, and only twenty-four percent would meet the national guidelines of a hundred and fifty minutes per week or thirty minutes a day. The plan team also wanted to affirm that living an active lifestyle and being physically active have a vital impact on mental health, disease prevention, and overall quality of life. This plan is meant to be a usable document that can help Waco and other funded McLennan County municipalities identify and focus on strategies to help individuals increase their daily physical activity by, again, making the healthy choice the easy choice. This is just a brief timeline, and I won't go through reading all of it, but I want to highlight some key points. Due to the pandemic, we were delayed in starting this plan, so it took us a while to identify a vendor, but we were excited to get an opportunity to work with Dr. Prochnow and his team at A&amp;M. The bulk of the plan development did take place in the spring of twenty-two, and first we started with environmental and policy scans, where we, in a community survey, there were five community conversations that were held to get feedback from residents on what to include in the plan, and the data was analyzed and reported back to the Health District in our Live Well Waco Coalition. To wrap up the plan development, ten stakeholder listening sessions were held, followed by the writing and design of the Waco McLennan County Active Living Plan. As described earlier, the data collection methods included a physical activity policy scan, the physical activity resource assessment, community conversations, and stakeholder listening sessions, and community surveys. Some of the results: the physical activity policy scan consisted of the review of fifteen city and county policy planning documents. The goal of the review was to determine if our current policies encourage and promote physical activity. Based on the policy scan, the following was determined: policy change takes time, but can result in long-term systemic and environmental change. Multiple viewpoints and input from residents and stakeholders may be needed to aid in the change. And equitable project selection policies may help to reduce disparities seen in park and development locations. The resources scan in McLennan County included a review of park, school, and church facilities that are available for use throughout the county. Based on the resource scan, the following takeaways were identified: to increase equitable access, resources may be needed in zip codes across the county with the worst health outcomes. Schools and churches that agree to allow the use of their facilities by community members may improve access to resources for these residents. And the temporary activation and repurposing of unused space may be an option to provide safe play places, especially in areas that do not have dedicated park space or have high-traffic areas. Recent park improvements and the beautification of natural resources, such as Cameron Park and the trail system, should be maintained as a cornerstone of an active lifestyle. These graphs are visual representations of the physical activity resource scan, focusing on the quality and quantity of the resources. The most common features were sidewalk, play equipment, and trails. The most common amenities were benches and lighting, and the most common nuisance was the presence of litter. The least common features were swimming pools, bike routes, and amenities where water fountains and locker rooms were, and the least common nuisances were seen as graffiti and overgrown grass. So you can see the zip codes correlated with the map, so you can just kind of have an idea of the area that was surveyed. The results of our community conversations were in line with what we normally hear from community members, but it's always important for us to get feedback from the community whenever we develop any intervention. And due to the looming COVID-19 pandemic, the focus groups were not near as heavily attended as we would have liked, but we were glad to get some input in the five focus groups. Common themes and results included a focus on safety and lighting that may promote the usage of parks, especially in the early morning and early evening hours, a desire for the city to add additional public swimming pools and other water features to parks, the recognition of inequitable distribution of upgrades and park quality improvements, and the awareness of areas that lack sidewalks or easy accessibility to physical activity resources that don't require motorized transportation. The, a community survey was completed to capture feedback from residents, and this survey did not include a representative sample of the county. It was open for residents to complete and shared via social media, email, and at in-person outreach events and coalition meetings. Again, this was not a representative sample, so I want to make sure we keep that in mind. But a total of the two hundred and seventy-three residents completed the survey. Sixty-seven percent of the respondents were female, and the average age was thirty-eight point five. The race and ethnicity breakdown was as follows: seventy-one percent were white, seventeen percent black or African-American, and eight percent Hispanic. Again, the demographics and responses are not representative, but did support the information collected via the policy resource scan and the community conversations. The survey included current and physical activity behaviors, perceptions on social norms, a sense of control, barriers to physical activity, and intentions to engage in physical activity. The survey results identified that while most of the respondents reported being active, they were not confident in their ability to remain so. Most reported sitting more than four hundred minutes per day and would welcome ways to become less sedentary, excuse me, four hundred, yeah, four hundred minutes per day. That sounded like a lot. There is a need for free and reduced-cost programs to allow equitable access for residents to start and commit a physical activity plan. And lastly, the perceived lack of safety and access to the physical activity can prevent residents from being physically active. The result of the data collection described previously was the Waco, excuse me, the result of the data collection described ended in the Waco McLennan County Active Living Plan. The sectors included in the plan were offered a list of priorities or action items that can be implemented to move the city and county toward increasing physical activity of residents. The main themes from residents and stakeholders are in line with the mission, vision, and values of the Health District and the city of Waco, and are also in line with the City Council's strategic goals. The plan encourages a person-centered design and cross-step collaboration. In addition, the plan aims to address the disparities in access to active living resources and facilities. On January eighteenth, the Health District Advisory Board voted to adopt the Waco McLennan County Active Living Plan. Today, the Health District seeks adoption of the plan by the City Council, and the Health District will continue to collaborate with the Live Well Waco Coalition and its members in implementing sector priorities and strategies. I, along with assistance from other Health District staff, will offer technical assistance to other jurisdictions within McLennan County on how to implement the Active Living Plan. And lastly, this plan is one of the many tools used by the Public Health District to not only make the healthy choice the easy choice, but to help us move closer to making McLennan County a more active place to live and one of the healthiest counties in Texas. Thank you. I'll answer any questions y'all may have.
So much. Any questions or comments?
Let's see, Director Mallory-Horn, thanks. Great presentation. It's really kind of a cool deal. I didn't know what to expect, but man, you put a nice, nice package together here about an active living plan, and I like the process he went through, getting feedback and the community conversation on what to do here. Physical activity, good health is a priority in Waco, and that goes for mental health and disease prevention and quality of life. I like how you laid all that out here. One thing I found intriguing was one of your, one of the, kind of the themes that we were picking up here, and we've talked about this before in other contexts, about where we do have playgrounds or whatnot, but it's either a city, ISD, or faith community, and somehow getting that worked out. And I know Lisa Blackman with Parks and Rec, and Jonathan and Tom, I see, we've talked about this before, on how to, sometimes they're available in the neighborhood, but it's not accessible, you know? I shouldn't say available, it's there, but it's not available or accessible. So I like the fact that you kind of brought that one as one of the three main kind of feedback items, but great report overall. And I like, as Bradley said, or City Manager Ford said, it kind of fits well with the two presentations today, just making sure people stay healthy. presentations today, just making sure people stay healthy. But great, great presentation, Director.
Thank you, Councilmember Holmes. One of the things that we would like to see happen, especially after we complete our Community Health Needs Assessment, is establishing MOUs and memorandums of understanding with churches and hopefully with some of the ISDs across the county to try to make those resources available to people.
Fantastic.
Excellent.
What are the plans for getting buy-in from the people to start getting more active?
That's one of the challenges that we always have, is to try to encourage activity. So we know that a lot of times in families especially, if their children are involved, typically the parents will get involved. So we'll work with the school districts. We have really good relationships already with Waco ISD and the Transformation Waco School District in just trying to figure out the best way to move forward. We haven't laid out all the details because it is a multi-sector plan. It includes work sites, it includes the city, the county, you know? So we want to make sure everybody has a chance to give some, speak some ideas into the process of planning the actual intervention. So this is the first step. And really, we want to work with the Parks and Recreation Department closely. Jonathan and I have already started having conversations about how we can do some joint work as well.
I just want, it's not a question, it's a comment. I know that Southern Little League is on WISD property right now. And those fields are not as nice as the rest of them. And I have been asked questions by parents whose kids play at Southern, where field's not as nice as northern's or somebody else's fields. And I have to explain to them, we are not on city property. This is WISD property. And a lot of times, they haven't allowed us to go in there and work on their fields because of insurance and liability issues. So that's something that needs to be brought out to folks that when they want to work with WISDs or any ISDs, the liabilities that are there that we can't get into and like the parking there at Southern is horrendous. It's awful. I mean, you just park anywhere. And that's dangerous because kids are crossing all over those ball fields and areas where supposed to be parking. But that needs to be brought out whenever we're working with the ISDs. How are they going to allow us to go in there and work with them to make fields or parks accessible to everyone? That's a question I think needs to be on the front and center and for parents to understand that sometimes the ISDs don't want to work with us or feel like they can't because of liability issues. So it's not always just, well, there it is, let's do it. There's a lot of things that go along with it.
I'm sure we can continue to partner together with our ISDs to figure out solutions to maximize in public spaces for great causes like this.
Our intergovernmental meetings, those are the things that we absolutely would be up. Thank you, Director, I'm sorry.
No, I'm done. I just wanted that out there. I wanted that out there.
The universe. Thank you, Director Mallory Horn. I'm super excited to see this. It's a great plan. We have done some incredible work over the past few years. It's a slow-moving train, but it is one that is moving. And with, you know, Move Waco and the partnerships with other organizations and things, I know that was really, really well-received at Duconde Park and that kind of thing. The great news is, is, you know, thanks to some creative work of parks, we've got a whole new active space at the Doris Miller Community Center that's outside and fields and things. So great opportunity to do more things. And what was Alliance Park is a green space, so there's more space to do stuff outside. I think that is an awesome opportunity to put these works to play. I am encouraged by the MOU that will happen with the ISDs and the churches because it is all of our responsibilities to get this work done. I also want to make sure that we reach out, just like you're coming to us tonight, for those cities that are in McLennan County that aren't necessarily Waco, who walk this walk with us. I think they need to, you know, I mean, this is a statement that we, you know, we are accepting that and supporters of it. I think that all of those things need to be, and I said this at the Health District meeting, I think that all of those things need to be put into play in all of our partners and municipalities. So hopefully that'll happen so that we, you know, many hands can make this work lighter.
Yes, Commissioner Bearfield, I'm sorry.
That's all right. You had Commissioner's Court this morning.
We are hoping to be able to present the plan to all the city councils, I mean, the city councils for our funded cities. Because I do think it's going to take everyone to put in some effort and it just makes our community a better place to live. So, thank you.
That's right. I think we just need the high quality of life and this is such a great way to get to that. Real quick, is this a new logo too?
No, it's been around a while.
Okay, I'm just, the top one, the color scheme with those three squares at the top of the presentation.
Oh, oh, that's what we used just at our Health District Board meeting.
Okay, well, the top three, I thought that was new. I liked it. But anyway, hey, I'm so glad that we are here because I know that this is why you got into public health, is to do this kind of work and not handle a pandemic. And it's such a joy to get to see you thrive in this role. It's such a joy to get to see our community engage in this sort of public health work. And I'm really excited about the positive outcomes that we're going to see as a result of this. Thank you for dedication and your leadership.
Thank you all. I think you all are going to be really impressed with some of the things that our team is working on. Thank you all for your time.
No doubt about it. Thank you.
All right. All right. One more and it's, I'm told, very short. So short, Clint's not even going to sit down, he's just going to go to the podium for a discussion of planning.
Hey, at least you made it through.
That's right. Planning public hearing items.
I'm giving up on the PowerPoints.
What did he say? I need to, might have hurt his coordination.
He's giving up on PowerPoint.
I did want to provide, thank you, Mayor and Council. I did want to provide a couple of quick updates on the two public hearings. The first one being 75, which is the adoption of our downtown implementation plan that we've been working on for about a year. As Bradley mentioned, the Plan Commission did recommend approval of it at their last meeting and that recommendation did include the updates that we discussed with the feedback at the work sessions with Council in December and in our last meeting in January. I also wanted to provide information on, we did get some feedback at the Plan Commission hearing from our Downtown Neighborhood Association. They've just recently reformed and missed out on the public engagement process for the plan. So we did go get to present the plan to them last night at their neighborhood meeting and there was general support of the plan. And we did promise, as we start implementing the plan with CIP in downtown overlay, that they'll play a large part in public engagement on those two things. And then for our public hearing 76, which is a continued special permit case from Encore Electric for a substation at 1200 East Webster Avenue, they have asked for another continuance to allow some additional time. They're working on some updated plans to provide some additional screening around the substation, so they asked for a little bit more time to work those details out. And so staff is recommending approval of this continuance again. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Clint.
Sure.
Request for future gen items?
Mayor, I have, well, it may not be an agenda item, but I would like a report or informal report or an update, whichever, City Manager, on the Lions Park. I've had a lot of phone calls and people asking about, what are we going to do there? Just leave it that way? Or some people would like to see the return of the little train that we all used to ride in. I used to ride with my girls. But I just need an update, so I don't know what to answer to my constituents when they're asking about that. And wanted to know if there was any way we could get a little train back over there. So that's.
We can definitely get you that information. It's important.
City Manager, I did forget, as Director Mallory Horn was in here to ask about, are there any other, any further updates on the health equity study? I know, because I wasn't sure what we, the last presentation we had was the final.
We'll get I R's from both those. Be great.
Thank you.
All right. Our 2:00 PM, our 2:00 PM Special City Council Meeting was adjourned effectively at 2:40 PM. We will now recess this work session and reconvene regular session for an executive session as read into the record by our Assistant City Secretary at 5:04 PM.
One, Attorney Briefings, Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.071. A, possible litigation regarding possible use of per and polyfluorocarbon, substance in forms at airports. B, City of Allen et al. V, Time Warner Cable Texas LLC, DBA Spectrum and Charter Communications Clause Number 619 CV 00345 pending in the United States District Court for the Western District of Texas, Waco Division. Two, Real Properties, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. And three, Economic Development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. We're now in executive session.